Fifty-one dollars.
That's where I see it, right?
He's the five here.
That's right?
Yeah, yeah. Twenty-two fifty-one. Do you have a twenty-seven fifty-nine over there anywhere? It's gonna be for a blue oh four, uh, blue oh nine F-150.
No, these are all empty.
What number?
Twenty's, uh, twenty-seven fifty-nine.
Twenty-seven?
Oh, no, that's his phone number, I'm sorry.
Wait, that's your phone number.
Yeah, hold on, let me see. It's a blue Ford.
Wait, no VIN?
Yeah, no VIN, all I got is a blue Ford F-150.
I can write it.
Yeah, we'll write that down.
A blue Ford?
Yeah.
I bet I want to know which one.
How many blue Fords we got?
A blue Ford what?
F-150.
Jessica Larnes. Jessica Larnes.
It's gonna be twenty-five, twenty-five hundred, five dollars and fifty cent.
Two thousand five oh five, fifty.
Five hundred?
Five oh five.
I'm finna, I'm finna do it now.
Fifty.
Fifty cent?
Mm-hmm.
And then this one right here. It's got two thousand seven Ford F-150, VIN number.
Is that the same vehicle, you think?
No, I don't know. VIN number eighty-two twenty-eight. It don't say the color on here.
This is an oh nine.
Five twenty-seven forty-seven.
No problem?
Yeah.
Five twenty-seven?
Yeah, forty-seven.
Do you have a fifty-six oh seven on your pages?
Fifty-six oh seven?
Yeah, and that should be for a two thousand six Chevy truck.
No, something failed.
I got it. So that's gonna be right in second name with a VIN of, uh, eight hundred.
Dakota didn't build it.
It's a six oh seven.
The one that Mike's reading up, Dakota didn't have that on his list? Does Dakota have that on his list? Cause he'd been on the vehicles.
I didn't see none.
I didn't see, yeah, I didn't see that one.
Let's see.
Two thousand six.
What's the, what's the mama's on it, Mike?
What's the VIN number? Fifty-six oh seven?
Yeah.
Uh-uh.
I don't see it.
Eight hundred dollars.
Okay, where do you wanna, where do you wanna read all those bids? What part of the?
Maybe.
Hey, how you doing?
All right, I guess it's time to turn them.
Yeah, let's go.
You ready? Okay, the meeting will come to Harlan. We'll have the indication, the pledge of allegiance, uh, councilman, uh, Mike Ramil.
Everyone just join me in the Lord's presence. Our Father.
For our name. Our kingdom come, thy love be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And we give those who trust in us as we give those who trust in us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Item one, approval of the agenda.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Carl. Second by Mr. Torrey. Item two, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of January twentieth to twenty-five.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Carl. Seconded by Mr. Torrey. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item three, delegation, five-minute limit. Anybody wants to address the council at this time, myself? No, we'll go forward. Item four, city engineers report.
Oh, we got one, one person back, hold on, hold on, Mark.
Okay, good. Is that you?
How y'all doing? They came in today with occupational license.
Hold on, one second.
Uh, the agenda was already done. We have two of them that, uh, came in. One came in just before lunch and the other one came in right after.
You just wanna do it in the delegation form?
Yes.
How you doing? My name is Pedro Vela. Nice to meet y'all. I'm applying for applica, uh, occupational license for a collision shop. I'm trying to, I'm buying out Lucas Collision and, uh, that's what I'm applying for.
Did you say a collision shop?
Yes, sir.
What would be the location, please?
Uh, Lucas Collision, the pops' old shop there on Philo Street, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's the occupational license.
You gonna need a motion, second?
Oh, there's two.
You gonna make, you making a motion?
That's him, Pop. That's him, Mr. Nita.
Yes.
Mr. Nita, make the motion, man.
Miss, motion by Mr. Nita. Seconded by Mr. Torrey. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, welcome. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank y'all so much for your time.
In the morning, go see Craig, I'll see you home. Appreciate it, man.
All right, no problem. Oh, Mayor, the other one, MJK Investments.
Okay.
They had called, they had emergency, they had to leave, they couldn't be here tonight. And it's gonna be right there across from the Taco Bell where, uh, um, attorney, uh,
Harris Whittington, right down from his office.
I'd like to make the motion to give them theirs also.
First one by Mr. Danny.
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Mike.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Also, uh, Mayor, while we're still in delegation, uh, they asked me to talk, to mention that Louisiana Drug Epidemic Walk will be marched twenty-second at two o'clock around the courthouse. They just wanted, they do that every year, that, uh...
Really matter?
And they have to get with the, uh, police jury. But I'm gonna notify the chief and he'll just go check and see if they need anything. But they shouldn't need anything, they're not on the street or anything, it's just around the courthouse. And they just wanted to make sure that we knew about it and get our permission.
What is it?
You'll get with them and take care of it?
The twenty-second at two o'clock PM around the courthouse.
David, what's twenty-second?
Thank you, Chief.
No, uh, uh, March twenty-second.
All right, city engineer.
Danny, on the, um...
Excuse me.
MJK Investments.
Yes.
Is that remodeling homes is what I see?
Yes.
So they're gonna be a...
They have purchased homes and remodeled.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
Go ahead, uh...
All right, thank y'all. Okay, just a update on the few projects we have underway. The first one is the water sector project. Uh, there was a phase one. It was our sewer pond, lady repairs. During that project, we discovered that one of the gates on a pipe that outfalls into the chlorine contact chamber was rusted out, so we need to replace it. I have a change order prepared that I submitted to the state for review in the amount of thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars. As soon as I get that back, I'm going to present it to the mayor for execution. I just want everybody to be aware of it. And that thirteen thousand dollars will be covered by the grant fund, so no change in the project price. The second package is the sewer main pump, uh, sewer main repairs, pump station repairs and airator installations at the wastewater treatment plant. We bid that project out, we've got a contractor, um, selected and awarded, and we are waiting to receive contracts back from him, and then we will schedule pre-construction and then begin construction. Next on my list is our clearance program. That is our grant to demolish the, the, um, dilapidated houses. Just as a status on where we stand on all of that, there were thirty-one houses in the application, twenty of them have been recommended for condemnation, three structures have already been demolished by the landowner, one structure, structure had burned down, two have been repaired and two are under construction. One was deter, determined to be repairable, in other words, it wasn't condemnable. And then one was occupied. We have one remaining structure to be inspected, then we'll be done. We're gonna probably knock that out either this week or next week, and then we'll start our asbestos inspections.
Marcus, can the council get a list of those homes that are on that list, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next on my list is our DOTD LA four fifty-two drainage improvements. Our, our task on that project is to move our utilities out of the way before the state come in and install their drainage covers. Uh, we have received a permit from the state. The permit requires that all utilities be relocated by April seventh. We are going to schedule a meeting with Arondale to help him get that project underway, and we're going to get some prices to do some directional boring and other things and just to help to make it happen. Most of the work's gonna be performed by city crews, and we're gonna help you guys work through that.
Any, uh, any timeline on that?
Yeah, so we've got to be, we've got to have ours relocated by the beginning of April or mid-April. The state is scheduled to let that project for bids in early summer of this year.
Okay. I received some pictures today, uh, following the rainfall that we had, and that holy ghost section of gray... And that, uh, Holy Ghost section of graveyard was completely inundated with water. Um, if, if I had to guess, there was probably ten to twelve inches of water over this, over Preston Street right there. So, uh, I know that it's been mentioned in the past that these, uh, unexpected rainfall events or these, these, uh, special rainfall events that happen, uh, can attribute to that, but it seems like that is happening more and more often. Uh, so it, uh, I'm, I'm anxious to, to see some work start there.
Yeah, I could agree with that. And in addition, you know, to, to what you just said, the longer time goes, the cover's silting, a little more leaves fall, the feeling, you know, drainage gets worse.
More graves pop up.
So it's, yeah, I passed this evening on my way over here and it's definitely, so.
Yeah. After that, I got a call this morning from Mr. Eric from the state. And the last property owner, that they had to get the right of ways from their son today.
Perfect. Thank you, Rondell.
So again, the state's planning on letting that project out for bids this summer. Next one on my list I wanna talk to y'all about is the Xeno de Sale in Bigville Road Water Main Replacement. We've got twenty-five thousand dollars to continue that project. And I've talked with the mayor and the funds are allocated for that project and he's advised that we continue. But I'm gonna, wanna show y'all how far we got in the first phase and how far I think we'll get in the second phase. So this is Xeno de Sale. See the red line? That's how far we got in our first phase. I'm thinking we'll go about another six hundred feet in the second phase, which will bring us about right here. And ultimately, let me see if I can move this map. Ultimately, that'll get us about halfway. You know, every, every time we add a little more, it's gonna increase pressure, of course, to the people that we're serving, that we reach, but it'll also increase further down. Uh, right now, these guys are served with a two-inch galvan-, uh, two-inch metal line that I understand is corroded and's got about a fingers width opening in the middle of it. South, next is South Washington Street. As y'all all know, we had a special meeting, we authorized moving forward on that project. The contractor has ordered the box covers, we're thinking they'll be here about mid-March. So a little sooner than we originally thought. Uh, if they get here mid-March, in the end, we'll schedule that to begin work. I'm assuming that work will probably take about four weeks. Alright. Next is the, what I call your terminal sewer pump station. So that's the main pump station that all your sewer goes to, goes there and then it's pumped out to, to the wastewater treatment plant. Rondell informed me of some issues over there and asked that we come look at it and help him get some prices to solve some of the issues. And Rondell, I'm sure you were gonna bring this up in your report?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the terminal pump station. Essentially, you have a wet well right here, so it's a big concrete well, eight foot in diameter, about twenty-two foot deep. And then this one right here, so you got two of them in parallel. There is a pipe in between them. Water comes in, sewer comes into this one and flows into this one. Right now, you have these three pumps, one, two, and three. These two pumps handle your normal flows. They pump out to the wastewater treatment plant. Whenever the water gets really high, we get a lot of, uh, flow. Then this large pump comes on, kicks on. One of the problems Rondell's dealing with right now is these two valves right here are not operable. And that causes problems because when they don't close, what happens is water wants to come and circulate back through this pump. So Rondell asked that we get a price to replace those two valves, one of them being a check valve, one of them being a gate valve. We did that. And just to let y'all know, that amount is thirteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars for those two valves. They're ten-inch valves, these things are, you know, this big, they're, they're pretty big. So, yeah, that price is high, but they are large, uh, pieces of, of equipment. Rondell, I know you have some other things you probably wanted to discuss on this topic?
Yeah. That's, that's the main thing that we need to change. If that goes completely out, we won't be able to pump. The valve don't work, and the check valve did break. We have nothing. As we pump, the water's just gonna go back in the wet well.
Thirteen thousand is material labor?
Yes.
Well, before you leave, I'll give you, I'll have a contact where they actually house them right in, on East Texas. Where we can try to get some pri-, prices from them.
Okay.
So it's a place in East Texas that they house them and everything and they deliver them. I deal with them in, um, in Zooli.
Rondell, you need it done as soon as possible before something-
So they, they keep that on the stock?
They, they keep them in stock, so I'll get, I'll get that, I, I think I called you about it, and I'll get that information to you.
So do we need to make a motion, Mayor, to get the, uh, prices and go forward?
And do it as soon as possible?
But what you hear, Marcus?
Thirteen thousand, eight forty-five, but what we can do, we can get the price of Torick's guy and whoever's lowest.
Yeah.
The same type of valve, is it a different company or what?
It's a different company, but same, same stuff.
Will it work, Rondell?
Yes. That, that'll work, but right now, we have nothing. The other night, we've been out there from last meeting until now, we've been out there about ten nights. Me and my guys, so if y'all pass and seen lights on and be working, that's what we're dealing with.
So we, we spending money?
To the point that it's so old, it can go out at any time. And once it go out, they won't have no-
So we spending money on overtime, working at night, trying to keep it going?
Mm-hmm.
So Mayor, I make the motion that we, uh, we proceed in, uh, getting the proper, uh, amount for it. And, uh, take it from there, whoever's got the lowest bid and get it fixed.
Motion by Mr. Danny.
And not to exceed that amount?
Yes, yes.
And that's labor too, right, Rondell?
Yeah, that's installed price.
Your company puts it in?
No, not my company, the people that I know.
It's not for the installation?
I don't know if they put-
For the installation, but it is, that's not the only problem. Our main problem, we're running on one pump. At the time, the only way we can run that big pump is in a high range like we got today. And the second wet well, what is big pump is at? That one there has a map, about two feet, the whole diameter of the wet well. We had, uh, Pipe View come out. They got all the slug, the slug was about six feet.
Well, let's fix it right while we at it and, and do what we need to do and then-
So how much the pump cost?
We'll have to. If, if we don't, what I showed Marcus and him, that's why they jumped on it so quick. If we don't, DEQ is gonna come in, find us, and then we still gonna have to fix it.
So how much the pump cost?
Not the pump, yeah, he's working on the price of the pump.
Okay.
We have to do the valves first. We have to get it cleaned second.
Okay.
Working, to work his company.
Get all the-
They were the chief, this, we're working with them now, they're just wondering, cause it's a confined space. It's twenty-two feet deep, eight feet wide. You sending a man down there, you know, that's dangerous.
Okay, so on, on average, Rondell, how much does that cost?
Matter how many hours. I think it's somewhere around, we got a contract written around two hundred and thirty dollars an hour.
Okay.
Matter how many hours.
I think, I think we need to get it done as soon as possible before we get written up by DEQ, because then we're gonna have a problem.
And, so there, there are several problems here. The first one is the valves, and the valves are something that's really not, we really can't debate on whether we need to do it or not, it has to be done.
Well, I'll make the motion that we fix the pump station correctly one time.
Now, the other issues, as Rondell's saying, is there is some debris, I, I don't know what we call it, but there's about two, a two-foot mat at the bottom of this wet well right here, that's not allowing this pump to suck out of it.
I, I could explain it, I mean, if you-
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Alright, so, so what it is at the bottom of it is the sediment from over, over the time, it all get matted together, it's just a, a, like a big blanket that gets stuck at the bottom of it, and every time it's trying to suck, it's grabbing a piece of it, and the suction of it is not allowing the rest of it to come up. So because it can't pull the whole, of the whole mat up, it's gonna continue to block every time it's trying to pull.
How do you remove it?
You have to, what it, what's gonna have to happen is to have to go in down, go down there, like you said before, have to use, uh, uh, basically, uh, like a pressure washer. It, it's basically like a pressure washer, you're gonna have to go down, down to the bottom, completely drain it out, and you're gonna have to cut all of that mat up, and then you'll be able to suck everything up.
You gotta suck it out in pieces.
Correct. So, step one-
Your own company does it? Need to get it done?
Step one is to replace those valves. Step two is to clean that wet well, and then at least Rondell can operate with these two pumps right here, maybe his big one. And it does not fix this station, the station's old, it's, you know, his pumps are worn. But again, step one is replace these valves, step two's clean that, and I'm working with Pipe View to figure out, come up with an estimated cost of what that, that will take to clean it out. And then the next thing is to talk about, and, and we don't have to do it at this meeting, cause we don't have all our numbers, but talk about replacing these pumps with some different kinds, of course, some new ones. Um, but maybe something that'll work a little better than what you have here.
Hold on, just a second, Rondell.
That was about sixteen years, man. About sixteen.
Sure, they're tied.
I had a company come out, confident it was the one finish working on. Because the first two, they rehired the pipe on the first two. The other one, they didn't wanna take a chance of breaking it down, and they didn't have all the parts. Until they get the parts for the first one, then we won't have anything. So they're not coming back until we get it cleaned. We still have an outstanding deal with them, that's the one y'all approved me. They said it'll be about fourteen dollars and redo all of it. They won't come back until we clean that wet well.
So Mayor, I just, I mean, I'm just putting numbers together. I would say thirty-six hours, three days to clean it out. That's eight thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars at two hundred and thirty dollars an hour. And plus the fourteen thousand dollars for the, uh, at the max for the, uh, valves. That puts us at twenty-two, two eighty right now.
There's no way around it, it has to be fixed.
So I, I made the motion, so I just need somebody to say it.
Motion by Danny? Seconded by Ms. Nita?
Because-
Any other discussion?
I'm going to abstain because of-
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Alright.
Alright, so my understanding of that is we're proceeding with replacing the valves and cleaning the wet well at this point?
We, we, we're proceeding on fixing it completely.
Well, that's, that's gonna get you by for a little while, correct, Rondell? What we're doing on the side right now is getting a price to, to replace these pumps. And I think-
These pumps, and the older pumps we have were the grinder pump. The mat that's at the bottom, it used to eat it up and, and send it to the pump. Right now, these pumps are just water pumps. It's not taking all the debris out, so over time, it builds up. We've had it pumped a few times, but it couldn't get all the way to the bottom, it get up, so you got sixteen years of buildup in it.
Would it be best to change it with a, a grinder pump?
Yes, and you put a grinder, grind it to it all up.
As it goes, it, it won't build up.
The, the thing I'm questioning is, is, is while you at it, instead of making somebody come back again, why don't you do it all at the same time? And then what you're doing with it?
Well, just because of the expense, and if the city will be able to swallow that deal.
You're still gonna have to pay for it anyway it goes.
Well, what I would like to do is figure out what these pumps would cost, kinda put some numbers together, and maybe some other things, cause there's a few issues you have at your wastewater treatment plant, and then come talk to y'all about a LDEQ grant loan. From looking at it, from preliminarily looking at it, to date, I think y'all might could be eligible up to sixty-five percent grant on a DEQ loan. So I, I'd really like to kinda get some numbers together and then talk with y'all about that, I just don't have them yet.
So we gonna call this pump- This initial part, stage one, stage two gonna be the pumps?
We need to do, we need to do that work, it's not wasted, no matter if you, you know, started and ripped all this equipment out and replaced it. You could still salvage those two valves you're gonna replace and reuse them, and you still have to clean the wet well, so you're not wasting any money. But I think that'll get you operable, and then we can take a step back and say, alright, what do we need to do to this pump station to fix it for the next twenty years? You know, where Rondell doesn't have to go there and spend all night, uh, working next week, next month on it. So that, that's my proposal, let's get this resolved, take a step back and see what the DEQ program might could do for the city.
So you think by next week, you can have a, uh, have a crew there start to clean it?
I don't know about next week, um, but I would think within the next two weeks, I would think, would be reasonable.
Okay. We can hold out, Rondell, that long?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it'll be as soon as possible, I just don't want it to take a week, you know, and-
Yeah, we still working, cause they, they want, before they even send their crew down, they want a definite depth of the wet well and the diameter. They, they would not send their crew down, and we don't give them that. And we have to get a ball to stop the flow, it was a twenty-four inch ball.
Mm-hmm.
We have to get that to stop the flow to the other well. Before they even send them, we gotta have all that in on it.
Okay.
I mean, it's just a safety protocol for their employment.
Can't put the guys down there, that, that sewer just started gonna be flowing, so we wanna make sure that-
Do you have the ball?
We're gonna get one.
Okay. We need to make a motion about a ball?
Uh, depending on how much it costs?
Yes. I mean, I have to, I have to look, I would say we can rent one instead of buying one, cause a twenty-four inch ball is not something-
Yeah.
So do we need to make the motion to rent it, Jonathan, or is it included with the fixing?
Say it again?
Do we need to make a motion to rent the ball, or is included with the repair?
No, I think that would be included.
Okay. Roll on, Rondell.
Okay, guys, that's, that's my update on the things that have changed since our last meeting. If anybody's got any questions about some other things that are going on, feel free to ask.
The only question, the pipes that we have for, uh, for, uh, Washington Street. Can we take those pipes and put a drainage over here on Laurel Street with that, use that on, Rondell?
That's what we plan on doing with them.
That's what I'm talking about.
Already offered to bring a big truck and haul it to the yard. So Marcus and them, they're working on it now, I think AT&T is willing to move it around.
You're talking about Anderson Press?
Yes.
No, I was talking about Laurel Street, coming up for-
Too big.
Huh? Too big?
Yeah, too big, we use the nose on Ann's.
Okay.
Ann's.
Alright, that's cool. Damn, good.
Alright, thank y'all.
Okay, item five, approve LCDBG twenty-twenty-four demo management resolution. There's you two, Mark.
It, it's not me, but I did offer to Craig that I could give y'all the rundown on it. So this is from your grant administrator, Fry McGee. And essentially, it's just the paperwork we have to do for the clearance program. So because we didn't procure that grant administrator till a little later in the game, that's why this information's coming through now. But just, just in a nutshell, it's standard procedures, you're adopting a financial management plan. You are adopting a process to request the money from the state. You're talking about equal opportunity, you're, uh, I'm sorry, you are adopting a five oh four coordination plan, a section three plan, uh, residential anti-displacement, language access plan, five oh four grievance procedure plan, all those things. So it's one, it's one resolution that just covers you for all those conditions that you have to meet for any of these LCDBG grants. It's something y'all would've done anytime in the past that you would've gotten an LCDBG grant. Those things, those rules change every couple of years, so, and we just like to update it as time goes.
Alright, you hear a motion?
Motion.
Seconded by Mr. Carl. Seconded by Mr. Danny. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Item six, approval for the mayor to sign the acknowledgement of receipt of the PIFR, Mr. Carl?
Well, it's me again, we're here talking about the PIFR again. We finally, remember, we had the special meeting, uh, a while back where Mr. Alex Gilery from Blue Wing Consulting, uh, who authored the preliminary investigation feasibility report. Uh, he came in and presented it to you, and everybody was happy with it. And, uh, this is just a formal acknowledgement that you got it, and that, you know, we always talk about these things we're responsible for. And that's the, this sheet that I've given you several times, but it, it outlines what we are responsible for and what, uh, NRCS is responsible for. And, uh, at this point, they've already paid for the PIFR, it hasn't cost us a cent. Uh, the next phase that we're gonna go into is the engineering assist and technical assistance. They're gonna pay a hundred percent for that. After that, that's where the rubber meets the road, uh, we'll have installation and construction. That's how our neighbors in, uh, Mansour, that's what they're doing right now. Again, they pay a hundred percent. Uh, real property rights, now we ha-, it's our responsibility to go get, uh, the property rights, that kinda thing, to, uh, go onto people's property and, and that, that kinda thing. But you know, there's, uh, there's laws that, uh, protect municipalities, they'll give them the right to go onto people's properties to, to do things. To, you know, service, uh, the bayou, the services we have, and, and all those kinda things. So I've given, uh, Mr. Chapman, uh, uh, three copies for the mayor to sign. Uh, one for the, the, uh, Craig's files, one for my files, and one for NRCS. That's Mr. Kurt Garber right here, he snuck up on me. Uh, he's from NRCS, you've heard me refer, uh, uh, talk about him many times. So, uh, if you have any questions, uh, between the two of us, I'm sure we can answer. But you, we've already gone through this, and, uh, we had no problems with it before, so really, all we need is a signature. Do you have any questions for Mr. Garber?
Mr. Garber, you telling us at this point, um, we don't have to put up no money, right?
No, at this point, absolutely not.
So at what point and about how much?
Well, maybe it would cost us ever anything, but when you're engaging in a ten million dollar grant or something of that nature, it it's, it's, you gotta understand it's gonna cost you something.
Right.
Uh, but it's not gonna be nowhere near what you would expect, like this forty, sixty, that, those kind of things. We will, if it costs us something for property rights. If it costs, uh, if we have to get a special permit through, for example, the US Corps of Engineers, we would have to pay for that permitting. Yeah, and some of those are covered, depends what they are. And, uh, Mr. Garber was telling me right before the meeting, that in this engineering and technical assistance, there's a, there's a way that we can work with the city where you might be able to go through the city to engage these engineers, to do the final planning and everything. Because remember, the the PIFR was just a preliminary investigation, saying, basically saying, yes, we need this, and this is what you should do to fix your problems. Now, engineers and technical people will actually put this in the writing and plans and all this kind of stuff. But, uh, NRCS will engage those folks, and they may be able to engage them through the town where they reimburse the town or the city for that. So that would assist your cash, I don't know.
Yeah, and you also get administrative fees. So whatever the money is, it's usually ten percent of that for just handling the pass-through.
Now, at some point, we'll, we'll have to sign a memorandum of understanding, that's one of those items on that checklist the mayor has, uh, with NRCS. But again, nothing you're gonna sign today is gonna cost you a penny. Uh, there's no money outlaid at this time or anything like that.
So, so basically, what he's signing today, or what we're gonna approve, is pretty much like the state with the Holy Ghost Project, that, uh, we're just a sponsor. The money's a hundred percent, and it's a sponsor.
That's right, up to this point.
Up to this point, correct. Is is that what you're asking for, Mr. Garber?
Yes, yes. I I was unaware that in the PIFR, there's an acknowledgement page buried in the hundred twenty-nine pages in there. There's an acknowledgement page that the mayor has to sign. Now, it also talks about in-kind support and that kind of thing. That's where me, Mr. Jimmy, Craig, uh, anybody that has touched the, uh, this project that is associated with it, anybody in your group, my, the Bayou Prey Task Force, that's all in-kind support, and that can be put towards, uh, we get credit for that in the grant. So we're doing all the right things, but we we need to move forward, we've been playing with this for almost four years now. Mayor?
Uh, along the same lines, I got a letter today, um, from Marshal Pari, chief of the tribe. Giving, giving us permission, uh, to go ahead and start asking the police jury to take out the covets and garret. And in return, from what I understand, and, uh, I guess we'll have to get it, need to get Marcus to get with Ron. They want access, they want a concrete off of the, uh, tunicule and to access the corner of the building. And I think we need to get it in writing, and somewhere the police jury can proceed, because they said that they've given us the the okay to go ahead and start moving the covets out. So.
So that's what, something we already discussed, correct? That's what we discussed, the plan that we wanted to go and do anyway was concrete off the roadway and then.
Well, I think the state is gonna require that.
The state should require that, but.
And then it's gonna be a gravel pad up to, or or as, not asphalt, uh.
Gravel.
Gravel up to the, to that door, correct?
To the side door, not the front door or the side door.
That's what they wanna do.
But up until now, the tribe did not agree to.
Correct, but that's what.
Now the tribe is saying.
But you and Ron need to get that concrete and go ahead and rent out exactly what they want, so that we can come back to the council, for the council to go forward.
Marcus, look at that letter, make sure it's the, it's not the same one we looked at a while back. And and when we came back and said it was gonna.
No, the letter that he has is the one that came back, came to us in November.
Okay.
But what we need is a new letter that outlines what the, what we're gonna agree to as far as the work that's gonna be done on the tribal property.
That's what I asked Marcus to get with with Ron.
Yeah, right.
Because when we had initially met, the first time when we all met over there.
Correct.
There was some totally different than that, they wanted a road all the way around the back.
Right.
And now they've decided just to the corner.
Just to the side door.
So we need to get Marcus to get with Ron. Get that in writing for the council to be able to see and to agree upon, and then go forward.
Excellent.
Because we gotta move, we gotta go forward.
Yeah, yeah, we gotta move.
Yeah, basically, man.
Too many more days like today.
They don't wanna hinder, uh, no residents because of those covets. So they've given okay to go ahead and do it, and we can discuss, you know, putting something to the building.
Well, I wonder, we can just go ahead and pull the covets out, and then look at the roads.
You can't, you can't drive over them, you certainly can't run a fire truck over them, or an emergency vehicle over them.
No, they're not use, they're not using it, but but so what you'd have to do, the ti, the city would have to barricade the road where there's no more access to the back of the building.
Correct, so, uh, we have a jury, how soon can we get those out of there?
It's up to Kevin.
Okay.
He's gotta get a letter, seeing that it's alright.
Okay.
Can you, yeah, we we have the letter from here, but we'll, you want a letter from the, from the tribe to the police jury? And then a request from the city of y'all to go ahead and go.
Craig, let's drive that up to Morris, send it to him on our way in.
Mayor, motion to sign that letter, that motion to sign off, and I was seconding it.
Okay, just the letter that you give.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, alright. Yeah, I'll sign, that's no problem.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, second, any other discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright. Thank you.
Thank you, I just wanna say, I, it made me feel good to drive back to Marksville tonight, I used to live here quite a while, a while back, down on Bon Ton Street. Right on the ditch, you guys are worried about cleaning out. You guys are really lucky to have a guy like Mr. Lani working with us, we've been talking a lot, I know y'all haven't seen me a lot, but he's been doing a great job for you guys on this. Where you're at with us in terms of NRCS, by signing this paper, all you're doing is asking us to move to the next step, which is the plan. And the plan is not binding you to anything, it's a plan. And you may see that meld and change, and and what your goals are in that may change. But those, that's where you go through the environmental process, I know you guys have heard about EFA and all of that stuff, so this is where we're at. So what you're asking to do today is to move to that next step, it's very simple. And we still cover that cost of the plan. What he was talking about in terms of you being the possible agreement holder, is where we would enter a reimbursable agreement with you. You hire someone to write the plan, some of it can be in-house, some of it can be subbed out. You bill us and we reimburse, you get ten percent roughly, just for the administrative cost of that little bit of paperwork, paperwork exchange. So if it's a million dollar plan, which I'm gonna tell you is not unheard of, you can do the math. Okay? So think about that, that's the, we, I'll tell you when it's time to make that decision as well. Right now, this gives me the authority to go request funding. And once I've done that, I'll come back to you and say, okay, do y'all wanna hire somebody to write the plan, or do you want me to do it? Because I can do it, won't cost you anything either way. One way you can make some administrative costs from us, and one way we just cover everything and present you the plan at the end. And I'll remind you of that when we come back to that point.
Okay.
And my passport for the Free State of Abolsols will still be good, because it didn't stop me at the parish line. Thank y'all, it it did feel good to kind of come back to Marksville to see them and see some familiar faces and everything.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it. Item seven, approve MWPP resolution.
That's something we do, uh, handle, and that, uh, have, something that we have to, uh, put with you in City Hall when it faces the state. That I continue my hours every year to keep the license to run the sewer department, and we're not removing the ward that we're pumping into. That we're keeping up with our, uh, permit and the due weekly testing. And they give us a trade on there for the whole two thousand twenty-four year, or if people, if someone wants to come and look at it, they see the pay, it's two dollars.
I need a motion?
I make a motion.
Motion by Mike.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Danny.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, I made, open the bids for the junk and salvage vehicles.
On the first vehicle, last four vi, of the VIN number thirty-seven ninety, Kentrell Lewis with eight hundred sixty-five dollars and forty-eight cents is the high bid. On vehicle number, VIN number sixteen sixty-three, uh, Mokla Auto Salvage with one thousand twenty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents is the high bid. Uh, last four of VIN on the next vehicle is, uh, VIN number eleven seventy-three, Mokla Salvage with three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents. And on those two, there, he was the only bidder on those two vehicles. On the next vehicle, last four of VIN, thirty-three seventy, Mr. Alvin Morell is the high bidder with one thousand one oh one. On the, uh, next one, VIN number forty, uh, fifty-four thirty-two, uh, Barra Farms, fourteen hundred dollars was the high bid. Uh, next, uh, VIN number zero-two-five-four, Barra Farms, eight hundred dollars, high bid. Uh, VIN number seventy-four twenty-four, Barra Farms, no, I'm sorry, Alvin Morell, eight hundred twenty-one dollars, high bid. Uh, next vehicle, VIN number zero-seven-two-four, uh, Barra Farms, twelve hundred dollars, high bid. Okay, we had a couple of, uh, trailers. On the first trailer that was bid out, Barra Farms is the high bid with twenty-five hundred dollars. On the, next one was a, uh, vehicle, last four of VIN, seventy-four fifty-three, Mokla was the high bid, he's the only bidder on that one. Thousand twenty-seven dollars, forty-seven cents. Uh, next vehicle, twenty-five fifty-three, uh, Mokla Auto Salvage, three hundred twenty-seven dollars, forty-seven cents. Uh, next one, VIN number seventeen seventy-three, Mokla Auto Salvage, one thousand five twenty-seven, forty-seven. Next one, last four of VIN, ten ninety-one, uh, Rodney Saint-Romaine, eight hundred dollars, high bid. Next one was, uh, ninety-four thirty-two VIN number, Mokla Auto Salvage, five twenty-seven, forty-seven. VIN number twenty-three thirty-one, five twenty-seven, forty-seven, Mokla Auto Salvage. VIN number twenty-three twenty-nine, Mokla Auto Salvage, one thousand twenty-seven dollars, forty-seven cents. VIN number thirty-nine eighty-two. Let me see if there's any on the other page. No, there was only one bid, two hundred twenty-seven dollars, forty-seven cents. Uh, VIN number forty-one forty, five twenty-seven, forty-seven, Mokla Auto Salvage. VIN number ninety-nine forty-two, Mokla Auto Salvage, one thousand five twenty-seven, forty-seven. VIN number twelve thirty-five, Mokla Auto Salvage, five twenty-seven, forty-seven. VIN number thirty-nine sixty-seven, Mokla Auto Salvage, two twenty-seven, forty-seven. VIN number ninety-four fifty-nine, Mokla, no, I'm sorry. Alvin Morell, two thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars. Uh, there's a blue Ford pickup that, uh, Ms. Laird, uh, Jessica Laird bid on, she was the high bidder of two thousand five oh five fifty. Uh. Mokla Auto Salvage. Eight twenty-eight. Five hundred twenty-seven dollars, forty-seven cents, and Rodney Saint-Romaine. Eight hundred dollars on fifty-six oh seven, but wait a minute, there's something that's not right here. Hold up, there's something that's wrong, very wrong. Because Barra Farms bid also, Mr. Alvin Morell bid on a trailer, and he got one trailer for eleven oh one, uh, one thousand eleven dollars. Ms. Laird was the high bid on the pickup truck.
Correct.
Mr. Alvin Morell was the, uh, high bid on the, uh, two thousand three Ford with two thousand two hundred fifty-one dollars.
Correct, he didn't get, whenever we went through the paperwork, he didn't get neither one of the trailers. He didn't get neither one of the trailers.
He didn't get them, okay.
The trailers, he was not, yeah, he was outbid on the trailers.
And Mr. Rodney got the, uh.
The rangle.
Was the high bid on the derangles.
Yeah.
So that's all the high bids?
Yeah, and the rest was.
I need a motion to accept all the high bids.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Mike.
And I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Torrey, any discussion?
Can we get an optimized list of that, of those bids?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Did you give them a, a time limit to get all this stuff?
Yes. What's the time limit? They were told to bring it in by four o'clock yesterday.
No, 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 no.
Oh, no, they didn't, but they'll move them quick.
So can we put a, can we put a deadline on that of two weeks?
Well, they did them out of before two weeks, I'm sure.
Well, I I understand, that's the assumption.
Deadline in two weeks? So we give everybody two weeks to get this, or it'll be alright.
Put it back out.
So you made a motion?
Yeah, motion by Mike, second by Mr. Torrey.
Yes, mm-hmm.
Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright. Item nine, approve five sets of turnout gear for a fireman, Mr. Torrey?
Yeah, uh, as you know, the guys has been working, a lot of fires has been coming out, the guys have been out there, you know, doing what they need to do. And with one set of gear, uh, it it gets worn down real fast, and for the second set, they're still using the older stuff, which is outdated. So we didn't wanna try to break it down, well, we're not trying to break the city, and do it in steps. So if we can get, uh, five now, and then the next quarter, we'll get five more, instead of having to put it all at one time. Uh, and trying to break, you know, not, again, not wanting to break the city, we wanna make sure that those guys are safe, but they need this gear. So we're asking for, for them to go ahead and get five sets, that way we can outfit everybody properly.
You have a price on it, Chris?
Well, actually, we have ten sets of gear that expired.
Mm-hmm.
So now we're not in compliance anymore. And FPA says gear has to be replaced every ten years, so this gear is past ten years old. Now it becomes a liability issue. We have five sets on the agenda. We actually need ten, but that's up to the city being, it it now becomes a liability issue if a fireman gets hurt with that expired gear. Workman's comp won't cover, and the insurance won't cover. So it's up to the city whether they want to get the five sets now and five sets later.
Chris, what's the, what's the window, Chris?
Five sets is about fifteen, sixteen thousand.
So what's the window, Chris, of of the, I mean, when I'm asking the window?
Six to eight weeks.
Six to eight weeks that they have to be paid for?
No, six to eight weeks is the lead time for us to get the turnout gear.
Right.
Once we get measured, it gets ordered, six to eight weeks.
So looking at maybe three months.
Two to three months.
Two to three months, so when does it, do you pay upfront or after?
After the gear is delivered. They'll invoice us, and we have thirty days after we're invoiced.
So basically, you're looking at probably into May first of June.
May, June.
Toward the end of the year.
Christian, you're saying, you're saying getting measured. We hired different people at different times, it pretty well fits everybody, right?
Somewhat. You have to be sure that the length is right. You can always get them altered later, but you have to start with one size, and so.
I don't think I could wear Chris's, Chief.
Carl, you had a question, what you have?
Uh, ten sets are expired.
Yes.
Which puts us out of compliance.
Correct.
For the ten sets, yes, the city purchased ten sets last year. The city purchased ten sets last year.
Uh-huh.
We had twenty sets total.
Yep.
All twenty, well, ten were expired October of twenty-four. When we ordered the previous ten sets, they weren't expired yet.
Uh-huh.
Now we have ten sets that are expired.
So you have ten sets remaining?
Correct.
Yes.
I'm in compliance.
So you're in compliance with the ten sets that you have?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
We're in compliance, we had twenty sets total that would have went out October of twenty-four. But we purchased the ten sets before then, so now we're down to ten sets.
Whatever we have, in case of accidents, whatever, we won't have litigation coming that we don't have the proper equipment.
Right. We have firemen wearing gear from Hesma right now, Pankapi Parish, which they shouldn't have to be.
Motion to purchase the five sets requested.
You'll be on the second, cause I made the motion.
Oh, well said.
Motion by Torrey, second by Mister Carl. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
So on the second set, on the second set, whenever we come back after that, and then we'll go for the second set.
It's up to the council when they want to get the next five.
So you have ten, and you want ten more, so you'll have twenty?
We have, we, we have twenty sets total.
And you have ten that are, that are digged?
Ten.
So you have ten that are valid?
Ten are good, but we still need ten more.
So you have, you want twenty?
Total. It have to have, because that's what it rated.
We have twenty total, yes. But we have ten that are new from last year, so we need ten more.
So if we get these five, they'll be good until these come in, and then we can order the next set out?
Then we'll need five more.
Correct.
To make our twenty sets.
Correct, that way we're not taking all the money at one time and?
It's up to the city when they want to order.
Unless y'all want to go ahead and go with the ten sets.
That's fine. We just hate to be out of compliance.
So what are you gonna do, what are you doing now with the ones that expired?
They're still wearing it. They're still wearing it. It's just not a liability issue if somebody gets hurt.
Just educate me and I guess the council. How many firemen you have going to, how many firemen go to a fire? You have?
We have twenty, we have twenty firemen total on the department, not all twenties here at one time. And that's our part timers too, everybody has to have their own set of gear.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
So that's where the twenty comes in?
Yes.
Because of volume.
Man, the only thing I'm looking at is, we buy five now, and we get the other, we get them by June, right, May-June?
May-June.
We have our annual inspection in September, so we won't have the other ones in time. Will we be docked for that, Chris?
That's all I'm asking.
Rating, yes.
We get rated in twenty-five, we get graded in twenty-six.
So we'll be good until this year.
We need to have the year before twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, all right, okay.
All right. We had a motion in a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Excuse me, are we just purchasing five now?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
To the tune of sixteen thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chris. Ten, we send the donation of the Ford county bid from the town of Cottonport and donate it to town of Sinport, Mister Torrey?
Yes, sir. After more investigation and talking with the people of those two areas, Cottonport have several units, and Sinport only have one, and majority of the, two majority of the time, one, because their vehicles go down a lot. So Jonathan just actually showed me the paper to where we can actually donate the vehicle. So I would like to go ahead and just resend it from Cottonport and get it to Sinport. The chief was supposed to be here, but that's what I would like to do on that crown bid.
Motion, Mister Torrey?
A second.
A second by Mister Anita. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, item eleven, K Radio got bought out by Midstate and asked for the city to do business with them, Mister Torrey?
Right, the lady's not here, she, she came and talked with me, she advised that K Radio was bought out by a bigger company. And she was asking, will we keep it, do we want to keep it with somebody local? Like I, if she was, if she was here today, she could have explained, but I would like to go ahead and just table this, until they come, unless chief have some information on it.
That's who we deal with, radios and stuff.
Midstate? K Radio?
Yeah.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, they just was bought out by another company.
No, we never dealt with Midstate.
Okay.
But if Midstate bought them, I mean, they was the ones you?
Yeah, they, they just was bought out by?
So a while back I got a grant, I ordered some computer standards for our units under K Radio. When they came in, they sent me a deal for this new company.
Okay.
So it's, it's the same people, that's what I'm understanding.
Okay, all right, well, I just wanted to check and see, that's why, that's why it's there. So we, we good with it there, all right?
I mean, who else we gonna deal with?
Well, well, that's what exactly, Midstate was asking, so?
I'll make the motion.
They can do everything, they installed the equipment and the units and everything.
I make the motion, we keep rolling.
No motion needed, that's just they.
Second by Torrey?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Financial statements for the bills in January twenty-five, Mister Anita?
Okay, January twenty-twenty-five, city hall, sixteen thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. Police, forty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-eight cents. Fire, thirty-three thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-three cents. Street, eighty-one thousand thirty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. Beautification, three thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. Total, general fund, one hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety cents. Sewer, two hundred thirty-seven thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. AWC, sixty-seven thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. Water, twenty-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-four cents. Total, three hundred thirty-three thousand two hundred forty-seven dollars and one cent. Rent total, five hundred fifteen thousand two hundred eleven dollars and ninety-one cents. I make a motion that these bills be accepted for payment.
I second it.
Motion by Mister Anita, second by Mister Danny.
I'm going up, staying.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Park report, Mister Craig, Secretary of Treasury?
Sales tax for January twenty-twenty-five collected was three hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred twelve dollars and thirty-seven cents. ODA, the one percent is a hundred sixty-eight thousand seven hundred six dollars nineteen cents. The high percent is eighty-four thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and nine cents. The high percent public safety is eighty-four thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and nine cents. An increase of nine point three six from December of twenty-four, collected three hundred eight thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents. And an increase of four point three three percent from January of twenty-four, we've collected three hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-one cents.
All right, Secretary? Mister Aston, police chief?
Okay, for the month of January, the police department handled three hundred and eighty-three complaints, fifteen accidents. Issued ninety-nine citations, made twenty-eight arrests. Turned two cases, five cases over to the district attorney's office. City court, we collected two hundred and thirty dollars from city court, police jury collected two thousand four hundred and ten dollars.
And how much for the year?
I hate to say it, for the whole year last year, the city collected eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars from city court. The police jury collected thirty-two thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars.
I've been bringing it up of why we're not getting anything, and even met with the district attorney, but nothing, nothing changes.
So I noticed a substantial increase in citations for the month of January.
Hey, I applaud both of y'all for going out and doing it, chief and A.C. Shit, I applaud, applaud both of y'all for writing these tickets. Good deal.
You can write a hundred and get one, you still get the same amount?
Yeah, I know.
Well, it's public safety, man.
Yeah, I mean, it's the cost that the city has to incur to go ahead and do that, because we have to pay for the cop, we gotta pay for the cop car, we gotta pay for the insurance, you know, we, we, we get, we get in the shaft.
So how do we bring this back to the table?
You don't. As long as you don't have a city prosecutor, you will not get to prosecute in city court.
Can we, can we get a city prosecutor?
You'd have to find somebody who wants to be a city prosecutor. We've asked before and tried to get some, somebody to do it, nobody wants to do it.
Are we able to do it?
If y'all can find somebody?
Are we able to do it, being that we have a board? Or the board two? Yep. Being that we have board two, district court, are we allowed to do that?
Yeah, you can ask Jonathan. We don't have a prosecutor.
Nobody want to do it?
No. We've asked around. Y'all ask around, if y'all can find somebody, hey, no problem.
This goes in front of the judge, it's just? Okay, yeah, the district attorney's office prosecutor. So we'll no longer use the district attorney if we find, if you find a prosecutor.
Can we get someone from out of town?
Can we advertise for it, see? That hurt? Yeah, I mean, let's advertise, if that's the case, let's advertise and see what can come up there. Somebody will say so, or, or not, but we don't know unless we ask.
Advertise for it. We've asked around, and at one time, somebody had decided that he was gonna do it, then he backed up. If y'all have anybody in mind, hey, come forward with it. But we're taking a substantial loss. Cause we're paying, you know, the revised statutes say that the city has to pay half of operations of city court, and the police jury has to pay half. Reason the police jury has to pay half, there are cases that are heard in Bruyette, Hickory Hill, and Mokla. Therefore, those are outside the city limits, so that's why the police jury has to go ahead and pay their share, so?
Yeah, that's, that's been since that court was even created.
Correct, been like that forever. And we used to go ahead and, in the past, you used to receive all the funds. But you had to put up all the expenditures of city court. So what, it, it puts you further in the hole, because right now, the police jury has collected with thirty-two thousand, and they put up right at a hundred some thousand. So they seventy thousand in the hole, so if we would pay everything, we would be an additional seventy thousand in the hole.
Would be a hundred forty thousand in the hole.
Even though you, you get all the fine money.
Well, yeah, let's advertise for this prosecutor and see what we, what we can get from there, and not just here, trial Alexander also.
All right. Mister Chris, my chief.
My report for the month of January, we ran nineteen calls, fifteen were in the city limits, two were outside, with two mutual aid calls. Consisted of one trash fire, one smoke scare, four structure fires, two auto accidents, one illegal burning, one hazardous condition, one public assist, three vehicle fires, two fire alarms, and three medical emergencies.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate it. Mister Chloe, street department?
Well, month of January, we installed three covers, picked up seventeen loads of leaves. Also, beautification was helping with the leaves too. We did cut some grass this past with the side cutter, because we had some spots in Rondell that chipped off. So we did do that, putting coal mix as needed when it ain't raining. And we finally got us a concrete man. Two days ago on there, he'll help us on the expenditures, and my animal count is three right now. And also getting a lot of calls from abroad. I tried to sit on them to bring the dogs, we can't do it. So they probably, they tell me they gonna go talk to you also.
Speaking on that issue, can you do me a huge favor and get with Miss, Miss Beryl, and get the information to her in reference to the, who y'all deal with with the kennel? Cause she was looking to try to do one in there, uh, that way it can have the same type of setup we have.
All right. Thank you, Chloe. Mister Sean?
In the month of January, we helped Matt LaMoyne take down Christmas lights and banners. We picked up forty-three bags of litter on State Roads. District one, we had twenty-three bags of litter. District two, seventy-two bags of litter. District three, ninety-eight bags of litter. District four, forty-eight. District five, sixty-one. For a total of three hundred and forty-five bags, and we started helping, uh, street department breaking the leaves and stuff out of covers.
Thank you, Sean, appreciate it.
Chloe, we talking about these covers, I mean, I know, we talked about it, are we now going through them now? Okay, okay. Number, pictures of everything.
I left pictures.
Mister Rondell, city manager?
Uh, we spoke about the sewer issue, I had, the only thing I have to say, the last week in February, gonna be a safety meeting for all employees. The fire and police won't have to do it. Police should have one next week, yeah, they should. I'm gonna go there and we can do the safety meeting. With everyone else, also, y'all have y'all name, I'll say y'all dead, it's gonna be, we have to do it, I have to log it out, feel free to. That's all I have, man.
Thank you, Rondell. Miss Beverly?
I have a report. Um, for the month of January, on the collection side, eighty-nine meters were locked, sixty-two are paid, twenty-seven owed, and not accounted for, made inactive. On the maintenance side, we responded to one hundred ninety-eight service calls, ran twenty-three profiles, repaired seven leaks, and pulled four meters. All right.
Thank you, Buck.
Hey, Craig, with that system, is there any way you can see how much you owe on the water, for the water thing? When you're paying it, you can only pay, you don't have a, unless, unless you got it on your, your paper, whenever they send it to you.
Yeah.
Outside of that, I mean, say for instance, I'm on the road.
AWC sends you a bill.
AWC sends it.
So it's not nothing that's gonna be posted online that you can?
Okay.
Mister Jonathan? I have two things, but they're gonna need to be in executive session.
Before we do that, Marty Groh is Sunday. The parade, where are we lining up, and what time, and everything for the general public to know what time the parade starts and stuff?
One o'clock.
Starts at twelve, the parade starts at?
It lines up?
Line up at twelve. Line up at twelve, right here on Ogden?
Yeah.
And the parade starts at twelve?
One.
At one, I'm sorry, one, lineup is at twelve.
Last time, I think we had lined up over there by Taco Bell.
No, that was Fourth of July.
Fourth of July. So now they wanna line up here. Okay.
I, I, this Beverly wasn't here, she recorded up. I have a restaurant that opened, they're not on city water, and they didn't come in and do a deposit yet. Then there's several times, just when I can put a ball in the line, the call department.
I thought we did that already.
I have another business on Golden Rock, it's not a restaurant. The only thing with that, if I put a ball in his line, it affect everybody around there, because they have one line.
You talking about the subdivision, I mean, the, the little, the little mall, the mini mall?
It's strip mall, yeah.
That's, that's not March of Water, that's Ward Three?
No, they're on city sewer.
Oh, you're talking about the sewers? Okay, cause I know they on Ward Three Water.
Yeah, but they haven't came and paid the deposit, and they have to pay the sewer fee.
Okay, so what can we do at this point in time to get it?
I've talked, I've talked to Ward, Ward Three about turning the water off so that we collect, but they, they refuse to turn the water off.
How deep is that line?
It's not that, the, the whole mall, it's hooked together, some other people that's in there, they're paying this sewer. It's just one business that just opened, and if we cut all the sewer off, nobody will have sewer.
Yeah.
So, so what, what do we do? So, so who's the building owner?
That's a sewer.
LaBord, is LaBord still on the building? So let's send him a letter and get with him, and see what he can do about it, if not, then he need to put it on his rent, or we charge him.
That, that thing is, they know that Ward Three won't cut the water off, that's a bad?
Rondell, who's the first one, the other restaurant?
The Mexican restaurant?
Or down the highway?
On the highway, they opened that up.
Yeah, but I thought, last meeting, we agreed for you to put the ball.
By Ford Bureau?
No, they, it was?
They owed us money and you was gonna put it?
No, no, no.
That's not the same place?
The building went to the guy that, that the Kings and Weeds.
Yeah.
They closed down.
So Mr. Norman?
So they still owe us money?
He's still on it, he is paying us, with the previous people had the restaurants.
Right.
He pays his monthly on that.
Okay.
It's a new restaurant that opened.
That's the one that, when you go knock, they say it's don't speak no English.
Yes.
That's the one right by Ford Bureau, correct?
So go ahead and drop that ball in?
Go ahead and drop that ball, we speak, we speak, we speak Mexican, see if they figure that out.
They'll speak, yeah, they'll speak.
They'll speak it in. But on that husband, Rondell, let's go ahead and get in touch with the, the store, the property owner?
Send me no flush.
And send him, if we gotta get Jonathan to send him a letter, we'll send him a letter and go from there. And I mean, if we have to put it, make them put it on their bill, that way he can pay us, that's what we'll do.
All right, I need a motion?